We will call to order this July the 17th, 2019 meeting, the Franklin County Commission, roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present. If you'd all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Commissioner Dickinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Father. We come before you, we are just thankful for your graciousness in all things. We thank you for your mercies, and we thank you for providing all that we have, and just help us as we conduct the business of the county, help us to be gracious to others in all things as well. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. Texas Correspondents and Organizational Business, today we're going to hear from Erin, talk about the Food Policy Council to give us an update of recent work in a peer learning network to establish a mobile food pantry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, it's been, I think, about a year since I came before you and talked about the Food Policy Council. So, and since then, we've actually been really busy in doing some, a lot of internal work that's come, that's having fruition now, coming to fruition, in this project that we've embarked on this initiative with the Mobile Food Pantry. So first off, for really about a year, we have been part of what's called a peer learning network. It's been with Allen County and their Food Policy Council, it's been with Reno County, their Food Policy Council, and then the Northwest Alliance is actually nine counties in the northwest corner of the state, so they have kind of more of a bigger regional council. But with that, we've actually been working with two experts in the field, if you will, with some technical assistance with the Kansas Alliance for Wellness. And so you have a handout in front of you that actually was the Kansas Alliance for Wellness newsletter that explains in detail the peer learning network. It really was quite a few steps, and it really looked internally to help us to establish and actually build our capacity more so in our council, make it stronger, looking internally, and then looking outward and prioritizing issues that we saw in our community. So, again, you can take some time, or if you have before, and kind of looked at that, but there, we went through four modules. One was looking at our organizational kind of internal capacity, the other was looking at communication, how to do that more effectively. We looked at stakeholders, how to engage them, how to seek out those who need to be at the table more so, looking at decision-maker engagement as well. And then this final step that we're undertaking at the moment is looking at kind of final steps, and we are working on actually being able to apply for some funding that is through the Kansas Alliance for Wellness. So from that, I can tell you that our council has benefited greatly this last year in this work. They actually came to us in, not every monthly meeting, but about every other monthly meeting, and we had some really good intensive work in these areas. And from that, we actually have gained four members on our council, which is great. We're really at our full capacity on our council. I think it's real, it's strong, there's some passionate people on there, some workers, and, and we also have a great representation of all of our community, not just Ottawa, but all of our community in more southern Franklin County, those representing producers, and those just interested in our overall resident well-being, to school professionals, so really, I think, a good representation on our council as well, which that's what we really strive for, to get lots of voices, so we can have the most, the best impact for our community. So from this, then, not to belabor that too much, then, one of the issues that we actually identified even before we embarked on this peer learning network was trying to address food access in our rural communities, particularly more southern Franklin County. That actually came from almost now, gosh, two years ago, where we did focus groups, we did ten around the county, and that was a big theme that came out from that. So we tried to address, have tried to address that, at least in a small way, with this mobile food pantry. This is actually kind of spearheaded, and this is one of our new council members, actually. She was a teacher in Central Heights, now she's going to be a teacher at Ottawa High School, that had a real passion for seeing students that would come to school over weekends or even over the night that she knew that was hungry. So from that, we know that, you know, we have higher poverty rates, more in rural areas, transportation is an issue. We, of course, we have the weekly food distributions here in Ottawa, we have harvesters, that's monthly, but again, from those peer, or from those focus groups, we heard that transportation can be an issue. There's people that are homebound, that can't get out, or just don't have those transportation issues to get here. So with that, then, that's why we had, through our peer learning network, established this food pantry, mobile food pantry. So it's just starting. We're really actually very excited, and had great response so far. Last week was the first week, this week was our second week, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Waymire, he actually helped us out on the first week, so. But just to tell you a little, so how it works, so how, we do have a coordinator, and so we get, have a phone number, and I have little cards I'm gonna, I'll give to each one of you, in case you have come across people that might need just a little extra help. But from that, they call the, the number, they'll get a return call, and we are serving right now Franklin County residents, we do have distribution, there is a couple sites here in Ottawa, and then there's one in Richmond and one in Princeton at the moment. So we're starting small, and hopefully definitely to expand, especially more into those other communities as well, but right now, that's our capacity, and we're looking to grow, but don't want to bite off too much, and then not be successful. So last week, we served 16 households, 29 people. This week actually had a overwhelming response, and about almost tripled, but 47 households and 82 individuals. So again, I can tell you that these individuals are those that might have, most of them just have some kind of transportation limitation, their income may be a little bit more to not be able to acquire other assistance, but they still need a little bit of help. So what our food package contains is ingredients on household, depending on household size, for two, for two recipes, that are complete meals, so we want to have a grain, a protein, a vegetable, so we have some good nutrition there as well, to kind of fill in some of those gaps. So it is just supplemental, it's just a little bit of help there. So we have got, kind of obtained food so far from food derives. Right now, actually, there's a little heroes in our community, kind of competition between the Sheriff's Office, Ottawa Police Department, the Fire Department, and EMS. So if you, anyone would like to donate, you can go, until Monday, we're doing this kind of a quick one, but it's a flash food drive, to kind of build up our stock. We have obtained a little bit of outside funding, and our coordinator has really kind of done more of that, to obtain some extra food, especially like the protein, like the meat and so forth. And then again, this funding that we're looking to apply for will help greatly with building up our supply as well. So that's kind of where we're at with the mobile food pantry, and trying to, at least in one way, address those needs of food access, particularly in our more rural communities, and going out instead of them coming to us, we can go out to them. We've actually had a great response in volunteers, I mean, that's what we're running off of from the council, but also outside volunteers. We're using the Get Connected volunteer site, which is through the, well, through the United Way, they house this, but it's a database that house, can obtain, you can obtain volunteers, you can post your volunteer opportunities, so we've actually had great response from that, trying to do a lot of, through our peer learning network, more communicating better, so we've actually been able to get some volunteers through our communication efforts as well. But we're, of course, seeking always volunteers, places to have food drives, if you have ideas, we would welcome that. And again, anyone really, I think, meeting kind of that gap population who just needs a little extra help, they might make a little bit more to qualify for additional assistance, but still need extra help, because there's really a large popul, group of our population that kind of sits in that. So I would welcome questions, but again, I just wanted to give you an update of food policy work and kind of where we're at, at this point.
Are many of these people already receiving the meals from, elderly meals?
Actually, you know, they do not, actually. We've kind of tried to ask, you know, like what their situation is a little bit, our coordinator especially, and a lot of them, some of them are seniors, some of them are not, a lot of them actually aren't seniors, so they're families, or with, you know, younger kids, or even just singles, that aren't classified as elderly, if you will, but still kind of struggling to make, make it, if you will.
Do they have to register beforehand?
Yes, they need to call, right, they need to call this number by Monday. Every Tuesday is the distribution, where they're at seven o'clock in the evening at the distribution site, and they're told that with, and to present their ID, but yes, they do need to call ahead by the Monday before of that week, so we know how many to, to get ready.
And every week, yep.
Yes, and they do need to call every week. Some things change, you know, sometimes maybe just once in a while, they need a little extra help, so, yeah.
So it's on the honor system, then? It's on the honor system?
So, yes, it is, actually. We're, we're just taking, you know, most people, I actually was at a poverty seminar not very long ago, and they said only about 2% of people actually abuse the system, if you will. So most people, you know, are genuine and, and just need a little help, but yes, we're not asking like to verify income or anything like that.
You work with ECAN, too?
Yes, ECAN is actually a big part of our Food Policy Council, and so we're looking to work with ECAN as, to gain maybe some of their extra produce that they don't use, and some, maybe their extra food that they get from like Walmart Distribution and Harvesters, that sometimes they're at like full and even overcapacity of what they can serve, even at their weekly distributions, so we're working out a partnership with that. Any other questions?
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I will just give.
Thank you. Okay.
No?
Okay, no public comment, takes the consent agenda. Items today on the consent agenda need considered and approved are tax change and the amount of a minus $504.56, and July 10th, the commission meeting minutes. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Have a motions or a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Okay, our first item is consider signing another service agreement with Centos for uniform and mat service.
Morning.
Morning.
Yeah, so we've been using Centos for our uniforms and our mat service for a number of years. We've been happy with the service we've been getting from them, and so we're just looking to sign another agreement with them. This is a four-year agreement, and then we'll maintain our shirts and launder them weekly, and change our mats out once a month.
What, what does that run?
So the uniforms, it'll fluctuate a little bit based on what we need, if we need mats in other areas, or taken away from areas, or staff changes, or whatever, but right now, we're looking at about $2,300 a year for the uniforms, and about $2,900 a year for the mats.
Each department's in that? Public Works also have some uniforms from Centos?
This is just for the maintenance department, and, and, yeah, for, mats for all the buildings.
How many people have uniforms?
It'll be six.
We looked around and see if, that's, any other companies are competitive with that, or?
We have, and I'll tell you, we, we always end up right back with Centos. There's not a lot of companies that do, and of the ones that, that we have looked at, they're, from a price standpoint, aren't particularly competitive, so. We did look into a little bit shorter duration of agreement as well, but Centos wouldn't really move on that, the reason being, just the nature of the uniforms and the mats, from a business model perspective, it doesn't make a lot of sense for them to do short-term agreements, and so I don't think we've ever had a single issue with Centos. I, I know that, and I've talked to David about this as well, I know that, you know, he's looking into uniforms, and this is among the efficiencies we could still find, is potentially trying to bundle everyone together, but we haven't done that at this time, so.
Do they, do they clean the uniforms, too?
So right now, we're washing our own uniforms, but starting in January, that's something that I would like to change, where we have everybody's uniforms being cleaned by Centos once a week. The reason for that is just kind of the nature of the work that we're doing, some of the maintenance stuff, working with drains and things like that, the custodians doing the cleaning, they, I think it would be better for, to have Centos clean those uniforms rather than them taking them home and trying to wash that stuff in their own.
That gonna change our price much?
So the price that I gave you was for that, for that service, yeah, so until the end of the year, it'll be a little bit less than that, but then, like I said, starting in January, that's when we'll start that pricing, and they'll be.
What did that add?
What's that?
What did that add? Have them laundered?
Um, you know what, I don't remember off the top of my head, it was, they, they still charge, let's see, they still charge the same weekly price to do that, so when we, when we went back and we took away, they were doing the laundering before, and we backed that off in hopes that we would save a little bit, and we really didn't save nearly as much as I was hoping that we would, but it wasn't a huge amount.
And I don't recall the numbers either, but I remember having the conversation with Brandon, and the amount of savings that we were realizing, it, it wasn't worth the, the hassle of asking our people to take all of these uniforms home, because we try to have a one for, try to have them one for every day, right?
Right, yeah.
Just so that they're constantly in a, a clean, crisp uniform, so. This is something that has been in Brandon's budget, it remains in his budget, and, and we feel like it's pretty important that our maintenance has, obviously, these uniforms, we want them to all look similar, we want them to be clearly identified, and, and Centos has been good to work with, so.
I already talked about it, including hats for?
Yeah, I've been looking into that, those are something that we would purchase outright from them, which really would not be a huge cost to, to get hats, but yeah, that's something that we've been looking into, especially for the maintenance side of things, as we're climbing in and out of ceilings and things like that, just a little something, a little buffer, in case you bump your head on something.
Questions? Okay, if not, we'll look for a motion to sign another service agreement with Centos for uniform and mat service.
Can you approve?
Have a motions or a second?
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Thanks, Brandon. Okay, item number two, consider for approval the 2020 county holiday schedule.
Good morning, Commissioners. In front of you is the proposed budget, or, I'm sorry, the proposed holiday schedule for 2020. Previous years, the county has mirrored what the Supreme Court has authorized for their employees, and we are presenting to you what our recommendations from when we have surveyed the management staff.
Joanne said, we, we typically do end up mirroring what the state does, however, before we do that, we send out a poll to all of the leadership team, asking them, you know, is this something that would work for all of your employees, and based upon the feedback that we got this year, it was to once again, just mirror what the state of Kansas does, so.
Centos? They, they have 14 days, we have 14 days, or 11 days?
We have 12.
We have 12.
We have 12, and they have 12.
We're proposing 12.
So we had this year, and then?
We had 11 this year. We had 12 and 18.
I think every year that I've been here, it's either been 11 or 12.
Usually depends on where Christmas and Thanksgiving, holidays fall.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I just would look for approval, the 2020 county holiday schedule is listed.
Should approve.
Our motions are second?
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, item number three, consider approval a cost of living adjustment for county employees.
Every year during the budget process, we take a look at not only merits but COLAs, and this year, we had budgeted for COLAs in a 1%, COLA. We would like this to be implemented on, for the current pay period, starting, it started June 1st, or, sorry, June 21st. Revenues have been consistent throughout the year, and therefore, we are asking for this COLA for our employees.
Eric?
2.5%.
Merits, two and a half, and this, this is just the COLA.
Yes, sure.
This is the COLA that was approved last year for the 2018 budget?
It was approved in the budget, depending on how revenues were coming in.
So we always approve it, well, we always put it in the budget for July, so then we can see how revenues are coming in, make sure everything is according to budget, that we haven't had any major issues, and then Joanne brings it to us in July, so.
Everything's good, go ahead with it?
Yep. Yep, we've had another good year revenue-wise, so, yeah, I have no hesitation with recommending this.
Anyone else?
I know it's something we've done for years, and it's really worked good in the past, I know to myself, I'd like to make a motion to approve the cost of living adjustment COLA for county employees.
Do you have a motion at 1%? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Item number four, consider for approval proposed changes to the current Franklin County pay ranges for the classified positions.
The current pay plan has, was adopted in 2014 and implemented in the first pay period of 2015. In 2017, we went out and we looked at what the market was doing, and we moved the ranges 2.1% based on what market was. The idea of moving the ranges is to keep us attractive to the current job market, and also to make sure that our wages are competitive. When employees leave, one of the things they always say is, I can make more money going to somewhere else, but it's not always just the money, but we want to remain attractive. Since 2017, when we last moved the ranges, the market has increased about 3%. So we had 3% last year, they're looking at about another 3 to 3.1% increase for this year. So it is our recommendation to move the ranges 2.3%. Since June of last year, we have hired 33 new employees, and when we move the scale, we're going to have 42 people that are affected that will move to the bottom of the new scale. That includes open positions that we're actively recruiting for, people who have transferred to new range, or to new positions and are at the bottom of those ranges.
Sure worry about somebody coming on brand-new, making more than somebody who's been here for two years, but that wouldn't be a problem, since we've, assuming they got merit increases the last two years, they would be, well, at least 7%, it's compounding, so seven and a half, seven and a fraction.
And the 33 that have been hired since June of last year will be eligible, A, they'll get the COLA. When we implement these changes, when you approve them, we do the COLA first, then we do any merits that come in, and then we'll move the range changes, so they will have that progression, so they're always moving forward.
Yeah, we've been able to give COLA and merit.
The 30, the 33 that we're looking at, or the 40, I'm sorry, the 42 that we're looking at have been hired, so they, after the 21st of June, so they're not eligible for another, sorry, for another month before they become eligible for a merit.
Sure we're not in that position where it's unfair to somebody who's been with us?
Exactly, nothing's worse on morale than how somebody's been here for a long time making the same or less than somebody just coming on, that's.
And just, and it's not just moving the bottom of the range, we're moving the top of the range, too, so that allows our people that are nearing or at the top of the range to also increase their salaries in the long run.
Good. Yeah, I'm sure that Derek and Chancellor are over these numbers, and there's no problem with it.
No, and this is something that we'll probably continue to try and do every other year. I, I, at this point, won't recommend doing it every year. I will disagree with Joanne to an extent, our people don't leave for money, by and large, and our pay is competitive, and has only gotten more competitive. That being said, this allows us to continue progressing forward and, and actually getting more competitive, because this is something that a lot of organizations don't do, and so, but yeah, this is another thing we build into our budget, so it's not going to put any strain on it at all. Yeah, I, I would recommend that we do this, so.
Obviously, that Franklin County is one of the largest employers of the county, and our employees are the most important part of it, so as long as we're in a good financial position to do it.
And the second part of this is also that we, in looking at the ranges, we, we study where the positions themselves are placed, and in doing that, we saw one position that we felt was out of place on the pay range. We're proposing also to move the Assistant Director of Juvenile Services from a grade 23 to a grade 25. The other position that's very comparable to that in the county is the Assistant Director of Community Services. The knowledge, skills, and abilities required to do the juvenile services job mirrors that of the Assistant Director of Community Corrections, and our recommendation is to put those two positions on the same level.
I, I can give you a little background into this, and, and some of you on the board were here when we did this. Here, oh, gosh, it's been six, seven years ago now, we paid a company called Austin Peters to come in and do a pay study, and, and they did that, of course, and we paid them a whole lot of money to do that, and I, I hope to never do it again, frankly, because they, they did a lot of things that, at least as I sit here now, seemed curious, and, and this is one of those, I'm, I'm not sure why these positions were ever not in the same grade, but I'll tell you, we're here, probably this fall at this point, we're going to sit down and look through our personnel manual again, look through our pay plan, and I do anticipate there being more recommended changes, because it's, looking through the organization and how our positions are paid, I, I'm not sure I would agree with the determination that the consultant made, and when you look into the background, you know, the work that the consultant did, I, I'm not sure that I trust the amount of work that went into assessing, you know, the value of these positions. I think you've got to look at more than a set of data from counties that, you know, may or may not be anything like us, and so I would anticipate that this is the first of, you know, potentially a few recommended changes to our pay plan, so. But yeah, as Joanne said, these positions are very similar and should be compensated similarly, so.
I had just got on the board when that was done, and... I had just got on the board when that was done, and I agree, we got very little out of, out of that for what we paid to have it done. It was kind of...
Heard about that, yeah.
Did not pan out well, so.
All that bothers me about this is that grade zero's starting at seven twenty-five. I kind of hate to see that, seven twenty-five on there. I'd like to see that, ten dollars at least.
Yeah. But the grade zero is for, is based on minimum wage, and that's what our current minimum wage is.
Do we have anybody at zero?
No. No, our grades start at grade ten, which currently is nine eighty-six, I believe.
So our, our lowest paid employee that we start at would be nine eighty-six, so it's right up around ten, and it'll be over ten here before too long, so. But I agree with that, Roy, I...
I just don't like to see it. Somebody sees that, and says, "Well, Franklin County only pays seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour."
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it.
Any questions on this? If not, would look for a motion to approve proposed changes to the current Franklin County pay ranges for classified positions at a two point three percent.
I would make that motion.
Our motions are second. Motion is second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Thank you, Commissioners.
I got a question while we're talking about this, we have the merit raises and so forth, and I don't think we do any kind of raises, do we, for our part-time? Is there any possibility of looking at some of that? Some of our part-time helps have been at the same wage for quite a while. They get just the COLA?
But not a merit.
I think it's, be something maybe to look into, I don't know that we need the full merit that the regular employees give, but I think it, a lot of part-time helps have been there for a long time at the same, and I think, kind of, I'll look into that and see if there's something there more than the COLA.
Yeah, and I think, at least how I view it, and certainly I would take any direction from the board, our, our actual pay plan, our merit pay plan, I consider one of the best benefits that we have as an employer, and, and it's one of those things that, at least to this point in time, we've reserved for our full-time employees, because our full-time employees are, I mean, a lot of our part-time positions aren't even benefit-eligible. And so I think, what, if we were going to do that, we would, I guess, just want to, in a study session, discuss, you know, what benefits do we want to keep for our full-time people versus, you know, our part-time, and...
And I don't even, I don't have an idea how many part-time employees we actually have, how, what this, how many this would affect or anything like that, I'd just be curious to see the numbers and see, because I, even if you're a part-time employee, if you've been with us for a long time, even in that capacity, I think that it may merit a...
Yeah, I agree.
Whether it's applied to COLA or merit, the whole idea from where we sit, of putting more money into employees is to retain good people, keep them happy, stay competitive. I mean, all those things apply to part, the logic would work whether it's part-time or full-time.
Exactly, I agree. I agree, good part-time employees valuable too, so. All right. Where'd I go? Item number five, consider for approval authorizing the chairman to execute the request to exchange federal funds in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-seven cents. David?
Commissioners, this is a, seems to be an annual thing, best I can tell. Every year, we submit projects from the previous year when there are federal dollars available through KDOT. KDOT sets the exchange rate, and if we have projects that qualify, we're able to identify those, pass along the information with the application, and then they will essentially send us a check for the, the amount. They've set the exchange rate this year at ninety cents for every dollar, and so they have made just under a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars available to us, of which we will get just over a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars from KDOT. Historically, what we've used this money for is to continue our bridge program, and I would encourage us to remain on that path. I'm working with our bridge consultant now to identify a few bridges that we will be probably submitting to KDOT for approval here in the coming weeks. That information will be, you know, I will bring that back to you for your final approval before we submit the app, excuse me, the applications, but that seems like a pretty good deal to us. Each year, the chip and seal project more than qualifies us, so we submit that with the paperwork. I've already gotten it pre-approved with the folks at KDOT, so that's no, no problem, we just need to execute this agreement, and we'll move on to the next phase of this exchange.
These are federal tax dollars that were levied, and it's determined this is our fair share of them, but they come with so many stipulations and documentation and requirements that, for that amount of money, it's, would be burdensome for us to use them. I mean, you have to pay prevailing wage, a lot of documentation.
Yes.
Then it's easier and ultimately more cost-effective for us to send them to the state and swap those out for unencumbered dollars. They don't have those stipulations, and then the state can make a large pool of that money and apply it to a project that does meet the criteria of the federal government.
That is correct. I provided in the packets some information from the Kansas Department of Transportation on the federal exchange program, the guidelines associated with that, so there is a few pages of, of information related to the program that gives a better synopsis of what is actually occurring here.
If I recall, ninety cents on the dollar is up from last year, is it not?
Yes, sir. Last year, I believe it was seventy-five cents. I think the year before, it was at ninety. You know, I'm not exactly sure how KDOT sets the rate, I'm sure they have some fair and balanced formula that they use, but that's, you know, we are fortunate that ninety cents this year is, that's a nice, nice return.
Is this money that's already been in the budget as income to the Road and Bridges Department? I mean, is that where it is historically?
We don't usually budget for these funds, because we don't know how much they're going to be, so what we do, like David said, is then we set it aside in a, in a non-budgeted fund that's specifically, usually specifically named to a bridge project that we're trying to do, like we have the Pawnee Road project, that there's money sitting in there, that's the one we just approved, correct? So you guys just approved that, and so we already had the hundred and two thousand dollars sitting, sitting in that account, ready to, to go when that bridge project, bridge project is approved by the state, and then we can, we're ready to go and send the money to the state right away, so the project can get off the ground, and we don't have to wait. So, like David said, he goes over this with, with our engineers, our bridge engineers, they recommend projects, he submits them to the state, and when we get these funds, we go ahead and, and put them in an account, so they're ready there when that project gets approved and let by the state, so that we can get going on the project.
Those requirements more work for us, but they, more work for the contractor that's ultimately hired and makes the project, for whatever various reasons, less attractive or more expensive, prevailing wage alone. Contractor could have to pay their, you know, employees significantly more for this job, as well as documented, they could have to, it's usually required to e-verify.
We, we want to stay away from federal projects if we can, but this, this, this program has, I'm guessing, come close to fully funding most of the bridge repair that has been done in the county. I'll say the average bridge repair, Pawnee Road Bridge is a perfect example, the money is set aside, and so the, you know, it's not coming out of our, our budget to pay for these things.
And when we do have excess funds from those, from those projects, like the Pawnee Road Project, I believe it was ninety-five thousand that we had to, so, that we had to send to the state, so we'll have, you know, seven or eight thousand dollars there, so we'll just be looking for that next bridge project, and we'll transfer that money over to that next bridge project, and, and then we have kind of a, a starting point already for that, so.
Any more questions on this? Look for a motion to approve authorizing the chairman to execute the request to exchange federal funds in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-seven cents. Approved. Our motions are second.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Item number six, consider approving the purchase of one twenty-nineteen, one-twenty-dash-fourteen AWD motor grater from Foley Equipment in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. David?
Commissioners, some time ago, Franklin County started a program where we lease our motor graders, the terms of those leases were five years or seventy-five hundred equipment hours. We have one motor grater that is at that limit now, and we'll have later in the year the possibility for additional motor graders that will hit that, that seventy-five hundred hour threshold. So we are looking to replace the blade, it's a 2013 model, that is at that limit, we're looking to replace it with a new, a new model here, it should be delivered in August if we agree to move forward. The, the price for the new grater is just over four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, but once you take down the discount, the Sourcewell or the government pricing, which is thirty percent off, plus a loyalty, customer loyalty discount of fifty-one thousand, it all, and then the trade-in value, which is a hundred and thirty-one thousand for the, the blade that we're going to return to them, we've got a, a total price of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars for this new blade. And then we are also looking at changing the terms of the lease, moving from a five-year, seventy-five hundred hour lease agreement to a seven-year, nine thousand hour lease. We feel like that provides the county with, I'll, I'll start with the maintenance that we do on these things, it's, it's regular, we do regular maintenance with our staff, and then through the lease agreement, Foley does a significant amount of maintenance and upkeep as well. And so this 2013 motor grater is still in good condition, we feel like if the terms were different, we would still get another year or two worth of, of operation out of it, without it costing us in repair bills and, and being, you know, in the shop for those items, rather than being out on the roads. And so we feel like this is a better opportunity for us. We still are guaranteed over a hundred thousand in, in trade-in costs at the end of the term, and we, we would like to give this a shot to see how it works out for us.
What was the guaranteed trade-in on the twelve that we're...
It's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
That was the guaranteed minimum, or that's what they gave? Sometimes they give us more than the guaranteed.
Yeah, I, I did not bring that paperwork with me, but it's, it's listed in the, in the quote, I could provide that for you, but they're offering a hundred and thirty-one.
What, what do they do for the almost forty thousand dollars to deliver? What do they do?
That is, there are, and, and I brought Kirk and Jeff, they might be able to speak to this a little bit better than I can, but they will, it's, they're, they call it the, the make-ready, the warranty upgrades, and the dealer install items are all part of that, thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Jeff or Kirk?
We had some units that were dogs, they were underpowered, were those the twelves? The one-twenty's they didn't like? Our operators don't like those? They say they're, have problems ditching and pulling culverts out?
The ditching requires a little, few more passes. The main complaint I get is roding horsepower, climbing hills, things like that, because the twelve series would do it in your higher range, the one-twenty's, they lose a couple gears, but ditching, biggest complaints, a couple more passes.
Even though, I guess they don't like them, we're still recommended to go with the one-twenty's?
I'm not sure what the cost difference was, but it was quite a bit to jump up to that twelve series in an all-wheel drive. The all-wheel drive's been really beneficial for us, in terms of snow removal, things like that.
How many of them are all-wheel drive?
Currently, we have five.
Information that we get from the, the dealer is that the all-wheel drive is a bigger benefit than the additional horsepower.
What about our operators, I guess? I know they really don't like the one-twenty's. I mean, there's more than preference that goes into it, I guess I wonder, how much have we vetted that?
But this was, is an all-wheel drive, correct?
It is all-wheel drive.
Some of the ones they don't like are not all-wheel drives?
Well, the one-twenty's, when they initially came out, the horsepower was lacking, and they've done some changes, we've actually run some prototypes for CAT, I think we're on our second one right now, one is, and I know they've done some things that have gotten more horsepower out of the existing motor that they have now. The, the purpose with the all-wheel drive, it saves us immense amount of money when it comes to getting stuck in snow banks and stuff. Each time we get a grater stuck, it costs the guys about ten thousand dollars for a tow bill, so it's, it's definitely made us more productive and less tied up when we have winter events like we've had in the past. But, but I do think we're getting more horsepower out of the one-twenty's. I know they want, we've had a plethora of different machines, and we've got the top end to the bottom end, and of course, they want the Cadillac.
Yeah, you always want a Cadillac, I understand that.
But I do think that we can make do with what, with the one-twenty's, with the changes that they've made.
Okay, but it's not the same, so it's not the same machine we weren't happy with?
It's the same motor, but it's different. Got a little more horsepower out of them.
We've tried something different, or they've tried something different, getting different outcomes, so. I'm satisfied, I mean, there's other aspects, there's fuel consumption, there's upfront cost, there's, I mean, you go to bigger...
Yeah, we, we had several of the operators, actually, this unit that we're getting, the, one of the prototypes that we, we still have it actually, don't we? So several of the operators had an opportunity to operate it, and I think all the feedback was positive, I haven't heard anything that's, that's been negative, so.
I haven't talked to anybody since then.
I, I feel like we are making a, a good business decision, providing a quality machine that will do everything that it is designed to do and that it needs to do at a reasonable cost. So that, that, this is our recommendation.
I'm satisfied that it's been vetted, it's just a lot of money, and we'll make sure guys get the tools they need.
It is definitely a, a lot of money, and, and we don't want to provide them equipment that's not going to function. That's not our intention at all.
It's a lot of money, but it's way less than that four-hundred-and-some-thousand to purchase one.
Yes.
These don't have GPS on the blades, do they?
There are, some of that stuff is inherent with the equipment, I would have to dig into this to see if that is a, a component. Historically, we have not gone down that path with, with GPS. As we, in the future, as we move towards more of a, with the asset management software that I've visited with, that may be, become a more important component, so that we can more easily match the software and the information that we're recording for our, our projects and our blading and all those things. for our, our projects and our blading and all those things, but currently it's not a focus of ours.
Well, we wanna keep our rug graders happy.
We do.
We do.
Definitely do.
Anybody have other questions on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of one twenty-nineteen, one-twenty fourteen AWD motor grater from Foley Equipment in the amount of one fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. Motion approved.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Okay, item number seven. Review the summary of the twenty-twenty budget to be published and decide on a public hearing date. Janet?
So before you guys today is the summary, this is the actual publication that we will put in the newspaper. We put a tentative date in there, but that's not, that's, we just have to put a date in there when it prints, so it won't, it doesn't wanna print without it, so we had to put in there a placeholder. So, as you can see, uh, down at the bottom in the far right-hand column, the projected mill levy this year is sixty-two point one-six-zero, um, which you can see in the middle column is down slightly from last year. So, um, we are still doing all of our final checks over this budget to make sure that everything is correct from our audit, that's correct from what you guys took a look at with all the department heads, um, to make sure our projections for twenty-nineteen look like they're on point. I'm looking over that, Derek's looking over that, Tammy's looking over that, we're working with Joanne on the personnel numbers and as you know, the personnel numbers are always a moving target this time of year when we're getting the quotes from our health insurance and, um, all the other pieces to the benefits package. So, uh, we're working really hard on getting this done. What we'd like to do today, well, I'd take any questions that you have on the summary, but what we'd like to do today is set a date for the public hearing sometime in early August. That will give Derek and I time to sit down and go through this all line by line, make sure, double-check again that everything is the way you guys approved it and then we'll have a ten-day publication window before the hearing.
Is there a headline on when the hearing needs, has to be?
The headline, the, the hearing has to be before August twenty-fifth.
Generally aren't you, historically on a Tuesday?
You can have it any day you want. We generally ha- have it in the evening so that people can come to that. We have entertained in the past doing it on the same day as the city of Ottawa, so one of us could, one of us could go at six, the other one at seven, but that really hasn't panned out too well as one of us will go long or, you know, and, and then people don't end up, you know, making it to both. We've tried it in the same chambers before and again, then it confuses people, like, are we gonna be at the city of Ottawa or are we gonna be here? You know, and people who wanna see the city of Ottawa have to come here or the people that wanna see you guys have to go down there, so, um, I would say just make this for when you guys think is best for the citizens.
Yeah, I agree. We, a couple times I remember we tried to do it so people could attend both and then when we had the second one, no one came from, from there to ours, so.
We try to typically do it the first week in August. She has the thirteenth in there and that certainly, we can do it that date, but I also don't think we necessarily need to wait that long. I would tell you that, I mean, I think this budget is complete. As Janet said, her and I will sit back down and we will go back through it. We will make sure the personnel numbers don't need tweaked again, but it's, it's a good budget and, and, you know, I, I would say the mill, I mean, if you look, it's, we're recommending a two-thirds of a mill decrease, so it's, you know, it's appreciable. And, and this budget, you guys have seen every piece of it. This paper right here is effectively the culmination of what you guys did for two days here a few weeks ago. And all of the changes that you requested have been incorporated into this. This budget allows us to, uh, increase the amount we're placing into reserves for capital improvement projects. What was the other line Janet had to do with debt service that we're also increasing?
Our bond and interest account, just because of the changes in the bonds that we've had over the last few years, um, one of the points that Rodney made to you guys was that the, um, the cash carryover in that account was down a, a little bit this year and that we should definitely get that back up so that if anything comes up, then we have the funds to pay for that. So we did put a little bit of extra in bond and interest this year to make sure that we get that cash reserve balance in there back up.
And that's, and, and I will tell you, we're, we're so fortunate to be in this position and I hope to always be in this position, but the challenge for the board is balancing, you know, what you feel is an appropriate mill levy with, uh, still allowing us to take care of our employees, to take care of our capital needs and, and that's where, you know, you can't just look at today and tomorrow, you have to look at ten years. I mean, I, part of the reason we have all of the capital improvements that we need done and that we're completing now is because I'm not sure that the looking down the line was something that was necessarily always prioritized, but this is a budget that it gives the citizens relief. I mean, it, it reduces taxes, taxes will go down. But it also allows us a healthy reserve transfer so that we can continue fixing these things and putting them on building maintenance plans so that we're not in this position, you know, a decade down the line. So, uh, I feel like it is a really responsible budget. Certainly a lot of hard work went into this. You guys, the five of you worked incredibly hard, the leadership team worked incredibly hard and then of course, and I say this every year, but Janet's really the individual who ties all this together and she did a fantastic job of doing that again. So, um, I have no reservations at all about this budget and, and, uh, obviously biased because this is a, a large part of, of staff's job, but I've been proud of every budget, but this one in particular, this year, um, I feel like every year we're getting better at this process and, uh, emphatically support this one. So if you have any questions, please let us know. Budget hearing is probably gonna be similar to what it's been the last couple of years. I mean, Janet and I don't rehash everything again. We answer questions from citizens to the extent they're there, but the lion's share of the, the work happens in those budget sessions that you guys had a few weeks ago.
And I'd just like to remind everyone that it says right here in this bu- budget publication that we will put in the newspaper, that this full budget will be available, not just the summary, but the full budget will be available for anyone to look at. Once we publish this in the newspaper, they can stop by my office anytime and look at the full county budget that's proposed and see every page of this budget that, that you guys will approve on that hearing day, assuming that's the, uh, the direction that you guys want to go. After we publish this summary, the amount that we publish cannot go up without republishing and setting another hearing date. It can go down if, you know, if you guys see something in here that you, uh, don't like, but, uh, it, we would have to republish if we're going to raise taxes above what we say what we're going to. So, anyone can stop by anytime and, and ask me questions about this and, um, if I'm not there, my staff will get ahold of me and, and I will definitely be available to answer questions.
I, I agree with everything Derek pretty much said. You can't say it enough, but a few years ago, this, the budget process didn't go that smooth in my opinion, but the elected officials and department heads are so easy to work with, they're all on board with what we're trying to do and they made this process go really well and, uh, like I said, they all were amazing at working with us on, on trying to accomplish what we wanna accomplish, so.
Are we still waiting on final evaluation on American Eagle?
We think we're at, um, at a decision point so that we, and what is, is presented in this summary is what we believe will be the actual value.
So we have stipulated to an amount with American Eagle's attorney. We are just waiting on the Board of Tax Appeals basically to sign off on it, but I, I have no doubt that they will, so, yeah, I think we're solid there.
So the only thing we actually need to, to do is set a date for the public hearing? I think it needs to be different than the city councils of the rural areas, a different, different date.
That's the only thing I worry about with doing the first week. I know a lot of them have the first week, um, is, is when a lot of them do their, their meetings, so the first week of the month is when a lot of them do their meetings. So, uh, if you're wanting to get away from when other city councils are doing those, I would, I would watch that first week. I, I don't know what, I mean, you guys know better than I do what date all those are, but I know a lot of city councils do it on the, during the first.
I thought Richmond the other day said August the second, if I remember right. I was thinking that's what they were talking, said, but I don't know about Williamsburg in my area. Have you been doing it on a Wednesday night in the last couple of years? After a regular meeting?
The thirteenth is a Tuesday, so that's the date that I put in here. I don't, offhand, I don't recall. It seems like we've been doing it on Tuesdays.
You got elections that first week of August?
No, we don't have.
Ain't none?
We don't have a primary this.
Okay.
The only thing I, I would ask you to consider and, and I, I cannot imagine this being the case, but if we do it, say, on the thirteenth and we get feedback at the meeting, that would ultimately cause you to wanna raise the tax, the mill. You're not leaving us much time because we would have to republish for ten days. In fact, I don't know that we would have the time at that point or it would be awful close, so I would say, given where Janet and I are at, I would, if you wanna avoid that first week and, and please disagree with me Janet if, if you feel that way, but I'd probably err on the side of doing it a little earlier because I don't think her and I basically just, we need to do what I call our final review and beyond that, I think we're ready to get it in front of ya.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, most, most of the city councils are early in the week, if I remember right, Mondays and Tuesdays. So maybe if you wanna go Thursday of, of that first full week?
Thursday, the eighth?
Yeah, the eighth might be a good day.
Wednesday? The date was that, Tammy?
Is it what? What is it?
Planning Commission, regularly scheduled planning.
On his Wednesday evening? Wednesday night to seventh? Wednesday night to seventh? Works with me.
I have no, that's good for me.
A final day? Six o'clock? That's what we've done it before. Six o'clock? That day worked you? Yeah, it's good for me. Sounds like we have a census on Wednesday, the. Seventh? Seven? Six o'clock? At six o'clock, is that what we're? Do we need a motion on that?
I would make a motion, just.
I would look for a motion to, to having the public hearing budget on August the seventh at sev- at six o'clock. Motion approved. The motions are second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
We voted on the budget itself?
No, you'll, you'll vote on that at the hearing.
Okay, takes us to staff reports. Derek?
I, uh, Brandon was up here earlier talking about, uh, uniforms and Cintas and, and you basically gave him the authority to execute that agreement. I, um, before we do that, I am gonna have him talk with David and just make sure that, um, there aren't any more departments that need uniforms that we could potentially tie into that. I, I will tell you, my experience with these vendors is even if we did execute this and later, you know, even if it were a month from now, went to them and said, "Well, actually we would like to add, you know, our public works department," they, they would do it. I mean, they, they want the business, they, that being said, um, before we send this off, I will make sure that, you know, there's not a solution in there for our public works office or anyone who probably should have done that before we had it here before you today, but we'll do it before we execute it just to make sure that there's not an efficiency that we can potentially find there, so. Tax sale continues to progress. Told you last week, final notices were sent. Couple times, probably a few times a week, I get notice from Jody and as of yesterday, another one, people are paying off their back taxes, so, um, happy with that. So we'll continue moving forward on that. We're in touch with the title company, we're preparing the title work on the properties that we know won't be redeemed, so like the Cove's properties, they're already at work on that. So we, we've progressed well there. We just talked about the budget, so I don't, got Brandon here to give an update on some projects, but I don't have anything else, so.
Just a couple of quick updates. We had, uh, some, a stretch of concrete outside the courthouse that got damaged when we had our roof replaced and through busyness from, um, our concrete guy and, and the rain that we had, it really pushed us back, so that's gonna be starting tomorrow actually and we'll get that all replaced, which is gonna be great. And we also, on Saturday, this past Saturday, Kerry Plumbing got the lift station pumps and the county shop replaced, so they've got all new pumps and controls for those, so they should be good, um, on that for quite a few years now, so, that's all I had.
No idea on the parking lot?
So I called them, um, about a week ago and they said probably, um, sometime in August, they're looking to start on it, so they've got, um, they've already fabricated the boxes that are gonna go in the ground, so they've got everything ready to go, they just are trying to get back above water so they can get started on parking lot here.
Courthouse H, or court, district court, uh, HVAC getting a defined scope for that?
So, um, so yeah, this is something that I'm gonna be bringing to you guys, um, probably in a study session at some point, but, um, I, uh, been looking into the, um, KCC, I think. Don, you were talking about that with the, um, uh, I think K-State is involved with some of that and, so, um, it's kind of an interesting process and I'm trying to learn a little bit more about it, but it may be a good option for us to get some of these larger projects knocked out. And I don't wanna speak too much on it now 'cause I've still got a lot to learn on it and then I'll bring that to you guys and, and let you know what we're looking at, but that would involve the, uh, uh, HVAC for the district court.
About the tower, the court, courthouse clock tower?
Yeah, so I've still got, um, Diles Construction is supposed to be meeting with me, um, is supposed to be sometime this week. He's been pretty busy too, but he's gonna, uh, take another look at, um, the work that he needs to do there. He's already given us a bid of which we, um, have said we're happy with, he just wants to give it one more look, um, and then he's gonna get that scheduled, so that should be within the next few weeks, that'll be repaired and.
Been able to glaze the windows at the jail?
Uh, we haven't worked on that yet. We, um, have talked with Jeff Welton, um, out at the shop, he's gonna get us set up with their, uh, truck so that we can use that, uh, to reach those windows and other than that, which is material and setting out some time to get it done, so.
Thank you, Brandon. Sheriff?
I wanna start by kinda piggybacking on what Aaron Laurie was talking about this morning with the mobile food pantry. That's a good program for, uh, for the citizens of our county and taking that out to their location. We are participating in the battle and, uh, so I'm here to ask for your guys' support in that. If you wanna support that pantry, come to the sheriff's office and put that. I know Nick is probably gonna say that they're, they're participating too, but I'm here and he, so that, that should mean something to ya, so, anyway, um, it's a little friendly competition that we have, that we have going there. We have a. We have a box in our lobby, and there'll be one in the jail lobby this afternoon when Amanda dropped those off. She was going to have to come back tomorrow to get the one for the jail lobby, but we'll have those as pick, as drop-off places for donations to that food pantry, and it's, it's a really good cause. Made it through the Richmond Fair with really no incidents down there, and that went very well. They had a great turnout at that fair. As Commissioner Howard could tell you, I know he was down there, it was, theirs is growing a lot, and the, enough to where the entries that they have in their, in their show, their livestock shows and the stuff, they're having to limit the number of entries that one person can put in because it's, it's just growing. So that's a good thing that they're experiencing down there. And we're set up for the county fair this week, and we will, we will be out there. We'll be staffing that for, between us and the police department, providing the security out there. We'll have the lost and found with emergency management, and we'll be all co-located together out there. So it's kind of what we have, what we have going on right there. We have a court security deputy that will be graduating the, from KLTC this Friday, and so that'll be helpful to get him back, back home and, and doing the, doing the work. So we've been spread a little bit thin because of some of the academy things, but, and that's going to help us out a lot. And the last thing I have is I just wanted to comment, the conversation that was made about the merit increases for the part-time staff. I do have three part-time employees that don't get that, that merit increase. They are not benefit eligible, so that what increase would be there would just be that, that salary, the 2.5%. It wouldn't affect, because they don't, it wouldn't affect anything on their retirement because we're not paying any retirement or anything like that. So I think the cost would be minimal, but I do think it would be a huge benefit and send the proper message to our employees that, you know, that they're, we're considering them to be part of the team, just like the full-time staff is. So other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd answer them.
Full of the jail?
As far as inmates, actually, we've seen some changes there, and I don't know if it is a change in the courts, it's a change in the prosecution, what it is. I know things have sped up as far as the court processes, how fast it's going. So our counts have been, have been going the direction we want them to, and so that has been a huge benefit during the budget. And I don't know if this is a coincidence on timing, or if it played an impact, but I provided you with a copy of the letter that I was providing to the cities that we house for their inmates. The Ottawa Municipal Court has made a big change in how they process those things. They don't use bonding companies anymore. They've, they've, they've canceled all surety bonds through their court, and they are really limiting the number of people that will be, end up housed in the, in the jail. So like I say, I don't know if that's a coincidence, or if it, or if those correlated on purpose, but that is something, and that's something that we anticipated may happen, and it's not a bad thing for, for our jail, anyway. We'll see how that plays out otherwise, but, so our jail count, our inmate count is going, is going the right way, but we're staying pretty steady there. But the numbers are not up in the 70s, 80s, and 90s anymore. We're down more 40s, 50s, 60s now, so that, that's a good thing. And it's also the good that our count is down because our contractor that provides the kitchen service, the food service in our jail, they've had some turnover in there as well. So with the, the count being lower, it sure helped them a lot as they're transitioning, getting new people in there and things, so. Any other questions?
Say, they're doing away with bonds?
With, through a bonding company. They, they have bond, the, both the bonds they have will be either OR, an owner recognizance bond, or a cash-only bond. But they will, they are not, they are not going through bonding companies to provide the surety bonds for any of their municipal charges in Ottawa's court now. And again, that does affect, have an impact on our jail.
A lot of companies probably don't like it.
Well, I would imagine not. Yeah, you're probably correct.
It's just city charges, though.
That is only city charges, you're correct. Yeah, that's only municipal charges.
Thank you, appreciate you and your deputies going to Lanes City Meeting the other night with the clerk, and they helped explain a lot of, they had a lot of questions that only you and your department could answer by law enforcement. And also Chief Blair Wellsell talked about the increase to inmates. He was very satisfied that it was a fair dollar amount on the increase, no problems there, so they both appreciated it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Dustin, you have it then?
Commissioners, I wanted to update you on the Idaho Road Bridge. Yesterday, we met our bridge consultant out there to do a final inspection before we start repairs. Fortunately, the bridge structure itself is, is just fine, it's structurally sound. The bridge itself is supported by four piers at each corner. If it weren't for those piers, we'd be having a different conversation. Under each abutment, which holds up the bridge deck, on the north end, there was about an 18-inch void underneath the concrete, so the only thing supporting that abutment were the piers. And so when that washed out, it boiled under the north side of the abutment and washed that material out. That's why there was no visible indication that there was a problem until we went across it with one of our vehicles in that weight. There was nothing supporting that asphalt because all the aggregate, aggregate had, had washed away. That's what caused that pavement collapse. And so we've got a, our, our plan is to fix this, and this is the engineer's recommendation, is to dry that out, remove all the silty, mucky material, get that out of there, and then we will place forms around the abutments and the wing walls, and we will pour flowable fill in there to fill that, that void. That will provide a little bit of structure and be able to hopefully protect it from this happening in future flood events. So we'll do that on both sides. Once that flowable fill sets up, we will then start backfill, backfilling and compacting that material. We'll get up to a foot or two below the, where the top of asphalt, the top of the bridge would be, and we'll put more flowable fill in to, within about four inches of the top, and then we'll put asphalt over that. The purpose of the flowable fill right below the asphalt is, again, to provide a little bit more structure so that we don't have to rely on traffic and time to compact that material. We'll do the compaction as we come up in six-inch lifts, and we're, you know, we're always going to have settling issues at those, you know, bridge approaches, but we feel like the, the flowable fill will mitigate that somewhat and provide a better driving service and a, maybe a longer-lasting repair to those, both ends of the bridges. So as soon as we can, we're, we've visited with one set of farmers, we're going to visit with another to be able to build a little bit of a dam to help us dry that out. As soon as we make that contact, which we're trying to, trying to do as we speak, we'll get some more pumps in there, get rid of the water, let it dry out, remove that material. So all of this is happening. It will take, you know, I, I don't have a timetable as to when that road will be open, but we're, we're going to get right to work on it, and hopefully late July, early August, we'll be able to, to open the road back up. So it's a significant win for us that that bridge is structurally sound.
Looks like they're releasing water from the dams right now. Is that going to affect this project?
It shouldn't, as long as we don't get five and six-inch rains in that water basin, again, like has occurred to us three and four, five times this year. I believe the last flood, part of the issue with it is both lakes were releasing water, and then we got the, the heavy rain on top of it, which, you know, really, you know, it, it, it created a, a bad situation that much worse, but I believe that the releases that they're now doing should stay within the confines of the Meridine River. So it shouldn't adversely affect us.
Could you get ahold of Richmond's mayor?
Yes.
And let him know if, if they're on, because we're going to start, if our chip and seal shows up when they're thinking about it, we're going to be, they're going to be pushing to get that street ready.
I will call them today. And just to, you guys asked about the parking lot and Kilo's schedule. I've reached out to them a, a couple of different times on some other issues, and, and they, they have some quite large projects that they're trying to get finished up. They keep telling me that it's going to be mid-August, mid to late August, before they're able to address the things that, that will need addressed as well. So, you know, they're, they're not just, you know, pushing Brandon off, they're, they're doing that with, with all of us.
Janet? Okay, takes us, Commissioner comments and board reports. Roy, you want to start?
I've been, I went down to Richmond Fair, too. Proud of my granddaughter, she's Miss 4H this year, Brittany Hornbuckle. She is very busy because they didn't, didn't, didn't have a Mr. 4H this year because I guess at the time of the selection, all the boys were in some sort of conference or camp, so she's doing it all for the fairs, and she'll be out at Franklin County Fair this week. And they also showed their livestock in a Rich, Richmond Fair. And that's all I've been to.
Wednesday, I was at the local emergency planning board. I guess we meet four times a year. One of the main topics this time was the, talk about the different companies that have hazardous material, that they have to provide the information yearly on that so that if we get called to an emergency, that we know what we're dealing with. And actually, the main thing that we might, there's probably more hazardous material that goes through the county, either on the highway or on the railroad, than there is in the county. Friday morning, I went to Chamber Coffee to recognize Adam Wine Gardner as the new police chief of Ottawa. And then the second Friday forum, our own Alan Redcliffe was the speaker, and every time I hear him speak, I'm just thankful that we have somebody of his caliber that is leading our department. I'm not only, there's, not every county has a full-time emergency planning director, and not only is he in our county, but he's been to a lot of different emergencies, so he has hands-on experience, so thankful that we have his leadership.
Yeah, I, to the Wellsell meeting the other night, they were met with their budget person, Greg Nices, and they'll be setting up their budget sessions to start moving forward. They're working on their sidewalk program. They announced their chip seal program for in-town, two miles. I talked with Pat Burton, which is their new planning director up there and building inspector. I talked about the progress on the truck stop, and because it's really coming along, and he told me, the, one of the good reasons is, he was out there one day last week, and he got to talking to, to them out there. There was 163 people on the job that day, working 70 block layers, because they're building three big buildings, so 70 of them were block layers, so, but anyhow, it seemed to be progressing really well, especially with this weather. I went to Lanes meeting the other night, and Janet was there, and the sheriff and them, and, and I think that was very good with a, had a big crowd, and I could help the city out a lot, having their presence there with professional answers from the county, not just having, having to come up with them themselves, got it straight from the horse's mouth, and I really appreciated their presence of being there. Went to Lanes, ran to the city meeting, and they're moving forward. I met with their, their park board, and I did this in my capacity with the Lake Region, not as a county commissioner. I'm glad to see it happen, but helping them with the pathways grant through the Health Department. And we sent out, and we applied for it the other day, $16,000 grant with pathways through the Health Department, and to, to refurbish their bathrooms down there and, and help replace some of the new playground equipment. So it looks pretty favorable that, I know Lanes helped them with theirs and this moving forward, and Wellsell's just added to their sidewalk project to continue. Any, are any of you interested on August the 6th, our CND program here? We'll have Barbara Anderson there to talk, and I met with her, she's with the State Commerce Department. I happened to meet her down at Rantill City Meeting, and she's, they have a lot more money that they've had in the past to offer to communities, $10,000 and less, and she's more than willing to help them figure it out, what, what they can do, and what she can do to help them through the State Commerce Department. So she'll be here in the commissioner's room at our meeting on August the 6th, that's a Tuesday, at 9:00 in the morning, if anybody's interested, any small communities in, in your districts, anybody from the city or township, or anybody be interested, and, and she act like it's not the old same stuff. They're actually, the Commerce Department has some new programs and some new money to do things, so that's all I got.
The only thing I've attended was, was the Richmond Fair, and, and it is a good fair, and especially for a fair that doesn't have any of the amusement rides, they do pretty good for making up games and, and a lot of different things to, for the people. Without the rides for the kids and stuff, they have a lot of games and stuff, so it was a good fair. And like I said, I'll be at Ottawa at the Franklin County Fair this week, hope everybody attends that. And we have a joint luncheon today at noon, correct?
Yeah.
Right here? We have a study session next Monday at 8:30? That's pretty much it.
I forgot to, so you all need to put on your, in your books that there's going to be a two-to-three-day commu, county-wide emergency training exercise, October 22nd to the 24th, and the commissioners need to be there, so.
October 22nd?
22nd to the 24th. And one of those days is a Wednesday, so I don't know what we do about that, we'll have to figure that out.
Sure we got some time ahead of that. Okay.
I might have one other thing, Rick. Talking about the budget, every year when we go to KAC Conference, we look at comparison about budgets throughout the state, and, kind of proud of our people here, Derek and Janet, what they do with their budget. Of course, the lowest mill levy is Johnson County, comes in around 19, 20 mils, and then the highest mill levies out west somewhere, it might be up to 120 or 30 mils, something like that, in some of the small population counties, so we're doing a good job with the mill levy, and, and when you compare it to the rest of the state and the other counties, that we're right in there, probably about in the middle, so that's about where we're at.
Look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Or adjourned?